Good evening, welcome to the August 26th Select Board Meeting for Town of Milton. With us this evening are Arthur Doyle, Kathleen Conlon, Michael Zulis from the Board. Absent this evening is Richard Wells, our Town Administrator Mike Dennehy also joins us, as does our Town Council Kevin Freitag and our Executive Assistant Hillary Wheat. So we'll call the meeting to order 7:01. And before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, Arthur Doyle is going to pay tribute for the Board to Judith Darrell Kemp, who passed recently, and then we'd like to honor her with a moment of silence as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The English poet Alfred Lord Tennyson might have stated it this way, that early on the morning of Thursday, August 13, Milton Conservation Commissioner Judith Darrell Kemp crossed the bar to the other side to see her pilot face-to-face. Judith was an ardent advocate for our environment, serving it both privately and publicly in many ways, including well over a decade as a dedicated member of our Conservation Commission. Her care and conviction were hallmarks during the Commission's monthly meetings and its sidewalks. As Chairman John Keanan wrote in his communication to her fellow commissioners about Judith's passing, and I quote, "She served both with distinction and passion for the resources which we protect. Her detailed knowledge of the region's flora was unparalleled, and her commitment to protecting those natural treasures will long be remembered. Her legacy lives on." Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Arthur. We could please honor her with a moment of silence. Thank you. If everyone will please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the United States of America.
Into the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Justice.
For all.
Thank you. Item number three, we will move on to public comment. And, let's see, we have four attendees, and if people could raise their hands if they would like to speak, and then we'll be able to call you in order. Very well. No speakers for public comment this evening. Thank you. We will move on to...
Madam Chair, I think someone raised their hand.
Oh, someone did raise their hand. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Roxanne Musto. Hillary, could you please unmute Ms. Musto? Thank you. Please go ahead.
Hello to everybody. Good evening. I wanted to just make a comment. So the reason I'm here tonight is I just want to make a comment to you. It doesn't need any discussion with this, but I want to bring something to your attention on behalf of Rushell Area Neighborhood Association. The Select Board and the Traffic Commission have repeatedly referred to this 2012 MPO traffic report when they were talking about the Milton Street and Apontin Valley Parkway area. And we'd like you to know that we've uncovered a glaring error, of which there happen to be several in this 2012 report. The specific error regarding the Milton Street and Apontin Valley Parkway intersection is that the text refers to keeping a stop sign at Apontin Valley Parkway and Milton Street, and never in the study of the intersection does it refer to installation of a new stop sign on Milton Street. Additionally, it never says anything about two stop signs. If you look in the report, the accompanying diagram in their report puts the stop sign across the street on the shoulder of Milton Street, and that diagram is incorrect. So we wanted you to have this knowledge, and, you know, it doesn't have to be discussed tonight, but something that you should really look at when you have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to make sure, is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we move on? Okay, it's as if we have no other speakers at the moment. Thank you. Item number four, under COVID-19 update, I will say that we're planning on September 9th at our regular meeting to have some representatives of the Local Emergency Preparedness Committee, hopefully Lieutenant Caputo and Caroline Kinsella would be coming to talk to us about an update of the study that she and Alan Bishop had conducted earlier in the summer, I think it was last presented in June, and to hear some other updates. And also, at that time, to work with us to discern whether there are other steps that we should be taking and ways that we can help prepare Milton residents for the coming fall and winter season. One of the other aspects of that is the Neighbors Together Fund, and I'm waiting for an update from Karen Gross-Horn, but I can say that Milton Residents Fund has received an infusion of funds from the Neighbors Together Fund, and those are being dispersed by Noreen Dolan, so that is working. And also, there are funds at QCAP in Quincy, and Noreen can also help connect people with those funds, residents of Milton. We also received notice that flu vaccines are starting to come in, so we will have those flu clinics to look forward to, which will hopefully help protect residents this fall and winter. Do any members have anything to add under the COVID-19 update? No? Okay, thank you. I would actually like to take our agenda out of order. Item nine, which is the appointment for our Equity and Justice Advisory Committee, which we've been looking forward to. If we could take that first, I do see that there might be people interested in that who are attending the meeting. And it came to our attention today that one of our members would not be able to be at this meeting and would very much like to participate in the discussion. And for that reason, I wanted to ask the Board if we could defer this agenda item, and if so, would we be able to have this meeting next week? We're eager to start the work, they're eager to start the work, you know, people who have come forward and volunteered, and I'm not sure that we want to let it go another two weeks, but I'm open to thoughts of the members. Yes, Mr. Zulis?
So, Madam Chair, I recognize that this appointment has been delayed for good reasons, that we've had a lot of people apply for the committee and for other reasons, including process. And if the fact that Mr. Wells wasn't able to be here tonight and wants to weigh in on the membership, even though that will cause a little more delay, I think the other balance here is courtesy, and courtesy as much as we can extend it, particularly to members of the Board, so that they can be heard. So I would, I think your suggestion is a good one, rather than have it wait another two weeks, if possible, if we could do it next week and accommodate Mr. Wells's desire to weigh in on the candidates, then I would be in favor of that.
Ms. Conlon, would you?
Well, yeah, I'm agreeable to deferring this. You know, I'd like us to get back into the habit of having two meetings a week, two meetings a month, excuse me, and not be on this course that we seem to have been on, where we're adding, we schedule two and then we seem to be adding one or maybe more every month, so I'm willing to do it this time, but I think going forward, we need to be a little bit more conscientious about our schedule. You know, I remember several years ago, it was hard to get a prior Board to meet three times a month, when we actually were appointing employees and doing a whole lot of things that have now been delegated to the Town Administrator. So I think we really are in a position where for the burden it puts on the Office in terms of doing more minutes, more agendas, getting the meetings ready, I think we need to address this going forward and make sure that we're scheduling when we can all be here and when, you know, dates that make sense. It's harder to schedule with five members than it is with three, but just going forward, I think we should be looking not to be adding meetings as frequently as we have been. And I understand during COVID, early days, early months of COVID, we, there was a need to do that, but it's been happening quite a lot, and it would be nice to get on a regular meeting schedule again. So I'm willing to do it next week. Hopefully it will be a short meeting.
Mr. Doyle?
I concur with the other two members of the Board in honoring the request from Richard Wells.
I really appreciate Katie, your point, because it does add an administrative burden in addition to the difficulty it creates for our schedules and adding extra schedules to Mr. Dennehy's and Ms. Wheat's and Mike Lynch, and yes, so I agree. And so, it's been, I've been endeavoring to keep us on that course and have not done a great job so far, so.
You're doing a lot better than I did.
My comment wasn't directed at you, Melinda. It's just...
No, I know, I know it wasn't. I know it wasn't, but I am largely responsible for scheduling.
We're all also serving on a lot more committees than ever used to be the case, for good or bad, you know, that may be something to be revisited at some point, but there's an awful lot of meetings that are, so it's hard to schedule these.
Right. So, that being said, do we, we'd still like to do this next week, it seems, and is there an opportunity then to move our, no, there's not, we have to keep that meeting on the 9th, I think, because there are things scheduled already, is that correct, Mr. Dennehy? Yes, okay, all right. So that being said, I, my feeling is this should be an evening meeting. Is that other people's?
Wednesday, the 2nd?
Does that, does that work for everyone? I don't know why I thought that, okay, that's the 2nd. Yes, unless people could do Tuesday. Is Wednesday the 2nd fine?
Tuesday's the 11th, and I think it's gonna be busy enough.
Oh, yes, of course it is. Right, okay, so Wednesday. All right. Is it possible? Never mind, I was gonna ask if we could do it at 7:30. I was supposed to go see the Net Zero House at 6 o'clock, but I'll give my spot up to someone. I don't want to...
7:30 is fine with me.
7:30 is fine with me.
Would that work for you, Arthur?
Yes.
Okay, it should be very, very quick meeting. Well, I really appreciate that. So I was invited to see that, and it would be helpful for housing. All right, thank you. Next item. Okay, so item six, we're back on track, or actually, item five, that we're going to defer the report from our Norfolk County Advisory Board Representative. He had some scheduling conflicts and also, with any luck, he'll be appointed, and he'll have time to give us a more in-depth report, given a little more time. So now, item six, we are looking at the special town meeting and warrant closing dates, and we just had a very quick Finance Committee meeting to follow up on some questions we had at our Finance Committee meeting, and Mr. Dennehy has some reports for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Brief discussion tonight regarding the Finance Committee. I think it is looking like, and obviously waiting for this Board's input, on potential December 7th special town meeting. I had a conversation with Glenn Pavlicek today from Milton Public Schools, what with the uncertainty surrounding the FY21 budget at this time, the good news that we received from the DLS in late July about the unrestricted general government aid and Chapter 70 money, followed by Senator Timmons's testimony that that will be honored to or through October. There's just a little bit of uncertainty regarding the FY21 budget, and Mr. Pavlicek concurred, and we are wondering if this Board would consider some placeholder budget articles for that special town meeting. Not sure if it would be remote, not sure if it would be in person, but just what with the, some of the budget moves that we made in June to cut some of the, reduce some of the budgets based on COVID. Finance Committee met last Friday with our Chief Appraiser and our Town Accountant, as well as our Treasurer and Collector Jim McCullough, and things aren't quite what they used to be. They were by no means sounding alarm, but something that needs to be, needs to, needs attention and might be something we need to address at a special town meeting in December.
Ms. Conlon? Did she want to?
Well, I agree with Mike's report on the financial situation. Obviously, there's so much uncertainty at the state that what we don't want to find ourselves in is a position where we call a special town meeting for December, we submit an article, and then we find out in October, there's really no reason to make any changes, because things either have gotten worse and we're not going to see any additional aid, or for whatever reason, we don't need to make any changes. So it seems to me that if, if we think there's some additional, the potential for additional funding, then what we may want to do is schedule a special town meeting, set a warrant closing date, and if, you know, if necessary, revisit this in a few weeks, when we're a little bit further down the line, maybe we'll have some more firm information at that point.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Zulis?
I agree with that. You know, set the tentative date for December 7th and see where we are as we approach September 16th. And if it appears that it may not be likely at that point, or isn't likely, then we can, we can extend it into January. I would say, in terms of what kind of meeting it's gonna be, we may want to let the moderator know as soon as possible that we're considering a December meeting. He may know that already, but, but he should, you know, I'm sure he'll start mapping out his thoughts on whether this is going to be remote, or whether we're gonna try, we would try something in person.
In terms of other articles, I know that the Planning Board previously told us they're not anticipating any. I forwarded to everyone, and I have not had a chance to do any real reading or research on this myself, but I just, a little while ago, sent an email to everyone with a copy of a letter that I received from a town meeting member regarding deferral of real estate taxes procedures. I'm not even sure if this is something that's really, more than our jurisdiction or in the Board of Assessors, but it looks like it was sent to the Board of Assessors as well, so that might be something we want to take a look at, ask the Town Council to weigh in on, and we may want to submit an article, well, the assessors may want to submit an article on that topic, but it was mentioned at the Finance Meeting, the Fire Building Committee is interested in an article for the special town meeting as well, so that there may be other reasons to hold a December meeting.
I didn't see if it went to the assessors. It looked similar to the article that they had submitted and pulled, or taken back for study, but we can...
I just meant that the letter from Mr. Stanton, the town meeting member, he sent to the Board of Assessors as well.
Right, but, yeah, I, you should look and see if it went to them, because it did look like there, a previous article that they had put in warrant. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, will we be discussing that letter that Katie sent later in the meeting?
I think that we'll wait until a meeting in the future, because it's not really on the agenda for this meeting.
That's why I asked the question, thank you.
Right, right. I do want to make a note to check.
So for discussion purposes, just to move it along, I'll move that we approve December 7th, 2020, as the date for the special town meeting, and to close the warrant for the special town meeting on September 16th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. Here we are, number seven, we're going to be discussing the town green use policy that Town Council Kevin Freitag has worked on for us. And I would note that it also includes the gazebo, so it's not just the town green. Mr. Freitag, would you like to brief us on this at all, before we start asking questions?
Yes, thank you and good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board, Kevin Freitag, Town Council. Earlier today, I forwarded to all of you a policy and permit application for the use of the town green and the Baron Hugo gazebo. This policy and permit application are really an extension of the existing permit application that exists for the use of the gazebo. In fact, in your last meeting, you authorized the Town Administrator on a limited basis to approve requests for applications for both the gazebo and the town green. And so this policy really sort of was, you know, created in order to sort of flesh out a policy that the town could have in place in which to consider any applications for use of the town green. I think that there are sort of, there are two important pieces that I'd like to point out here. First, there's a question of the direction the Board would like to go in terms of who is actually going to approve the permit applications. In the past, those applications, and they've been primarily for use of the gazebo, have gone strictly through the Town Administrator's office and have been approved by the Town Administrator. Given that we're now sort of, the Select Board is considering a policy that's a little bit broader than the gazebo, and in fact extends to the entire town green, which is town property, it's not, and it's not parks' property, it's Town of Milton property, my inclination was, at least initially in the policy, to set out that it would, that use of the town green and the gazebo would now be subject to approval by the Select Board. That doesn't have to remain in place, that authority and that, the permission to allow the town green and the gazebo to be used could certainly be delegated by this Board to the Town Administrator. So that's the first thing I'd like to point out. The second thing is, is that the, the policy tries to do two things, really. It tries to give the administration in town enough time, at least two weeks, to be able to process applications for the use of the town green. So in that vein, I think you should think along the lines of large events, like perhaps use by one of the churches, which is sort of the part of what began this entire process, was a request by one of the churches in Milton to be able to use the town green. So something like that, or perhaps if the town wanted to use the town green for some sort of, you know, an arts and craft fair, or an art fair, or some sort of an event, you would want to have, I would think, at least two weeks to be able to consider that and have the Town Administrator be able to not only request additional information if necessary, but also to run that through Police, Fire, DPW, and the Director of Public Health. So that's sort of the first path that's covered by the policy. But also, because the town green has been used in the past for some free speech purposes, I think it's also important that the policy have at least a mechanism in order to be able to deal with those types of requests, because what we see in a lot of federal court cases, including cases out of the First Circuit and the US District Court in Massachusetts, requests to use traditional public forums for freedom of speech type events need to be dealt with rather quickly. So in other words, if something happens and on a Tuesday night, and people in Milton would like to be able to use their First Amendment rights to, you know, to hold a rally about that event, they should be able to have a process by which they can, they can apply to use the town green and then get a response pretty quickly back from the, from the town. In this case, I suggested that that time period be three business days. I would just point out to the, to the members of the Board that although some of the courts, the district courts, the federal courts have said that the require, that the response needs to be quick, there's no bright line rule here. In other words, they haven't said you must respond within 24 hours, or 48, or 72, or a week, but it appears that sort of from looking at a number of those cases and trying to summarize the holdings, that three days, three business days seems about appropriate, because it's, it seems to me that that's, that's a, an amount of time that's reasonable for the Town of Milton to be able to react to the request. You'll note in the policy that in those circumstances, as it's written now, and of course, subject to revision by this Board, I thought that it might be prudent for the Board to, from the outset, regardless of whether or not it wants to maintain the final say on uses of the town green, that in those circumstances where something comes in and, you know, perhaps like on a Friday afternoon, for use of the comment on a Monday, that you might want to authorize the Town Administrator in advance to be able to, to, you know, review those applications, and then be the final say on whether or not those applications are approved. As you'll note, the policy has a number of provisions that are discretionary by whoever the approving authority ends up being, whether it's the Select Board or the Town Administrator, and those really relate to things like requests for proof of insurance, which is something you see regularly in these types of policies. And I would also point out that in putting together this policy, I looked at policies of other towns near Milton that have similar types of property. And so in reviewing those, things like requests for insurance, and also perhaps the provision that if, for instance, an event at the town green necessitated a detail, that it would be reasonable for the Town of Milton to say, we're gonna pass that on to whomever it is that has applied to use the town green. Now again, that provision is discretionary if the Town Administrator or the Board thought that it was prudent, given whoever might be requesting use, that maybe that requirement of insurance was too high, it should be modified, or maybe insurance wasn't required at all, or if they felt that it wasn't necessary for the applicant to be, you know, asked to pay the cost of a detail, that it could... cost of a detail, that it could potentially waive those charges. So there's some discretion that's built in into the policy. The um the policy also, you see sort of tracks in large part the policy that was in place for the Baron Hugo gazebo, in that it it requests information about the applicant, the described use of the property, you know, exact dates, uh potential um guests. And then it has a section where the approving authority, the select order of the town administrator, can approve the permit with conditions, such as perhaps, you know, based on the guidance provided by the police department, maybe a detail would be appropriate. So those things can be written in. It also has a a pretty standard release and indemnity agreement that tracks the release and indemnity agreement that Milton uses for a lot of other a lot of other types of applications and 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 use permits that it that it has available to the public. Um, and I guess I'd also point out that this this release and indemnity agreement has been updated to reflect um the COVID nineteen pandemic, which is consistent with some of the other uh releasing indemnity agreements that the town has put in place since March of this year. So that's sort of the overview of the policy. I'm I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Anyone have questions?
Oh, go ahead, Arthur.
Okay, Arthur. Mr. Doyle? Oh, you're muted.
As Mike Trevi say earlier, this weekend is Zoom. Well, sometimes that's a good thing. But in any event, um I just want to compliment um the work that was put into this. I think it is extremely thorough. I have only one major suggestion, if it's workable, in that uh item four might be relocated to either after nine or after ten, since it would seem to uh make more sense, at least to me, to follow the uh requirements, the conditions for approval, than have approval the approval statement um appearing beforehand.
I just responded that that's, that's absolutely fine from my perspective. It doesn't. Happy to do that.
Mr. Zulus?
So my suggestion also is on paragraph four, uh and and I'm going to do my best to Peter Mullen here. And and ask, um if there's a way we can make the the conditional clause maybe a little bit more specific, and and my suggestion is as follows. Whereas it says, unless the timing of the application does not permit, and if we could add after permit, review of the application at. So does not permit, review of the application at, and then continue a meeting of the select board, and then strike within that time and put prior to the date of the use. And and the the goal there is to just make it a little bit more specific. So again, it would read unless the timing of the application does not permit review of the application at a meeting of the select board prior to the date of the of the use. And I guess prior, it would be prior to the date of the proposed use. So that's a suggestion, just to, and and then the the only other question, I think, I I want to echo what Arthur said. I think it's a great job. And and I ju- I just wonder if there's a circumstance, you mentioned Kevin, if if you get a request on a Friday and for someone wants to use it on a Monday, um I I wonder if there's a way for us to allow uh and I guess it, I guess it's implicit in this, that that if Mike's able to get all the approvals on that Monday, if he's able to get the approvals prior to the three-day period, can he then go ahead and submit it, I mean, go ahead and and approve it? And I guess that's implied, but I but I just want to, want to make sure of that. So those are my comments.
Ms. Conlon?
So I hit a couple of points as well, but just then, based on what what Arthur and Mike had to say. Is it the sense of the majority of the board that we want to still have the board be approving these applications? Because my my take was that this is something that if we put a policy in place, I'd be fine with the town administrator handling the applications. Uh but I'm wondering whether we need to have any kind of a standard in here in terms of what the grounds might be for not approving it. I mean, might there be a political event that someone wants to hold on the town green and might there be a reason, should there be some language um kind of giving a little bit of guidance as to what might be appropriate to reject what might not be? Maybe not. Maybe it's it's too hard to come up with something like that.
Right. Um, well, that that was my major question and um and then I had one more.
I have a couple of others as well. I just wanted to see whether everybody wants the board to still have a role to play here in terms of approving these applications. I'm I don't feel strongly that way, one way or the other. I just thought it might make sense to have the town administrator handle them.
Right, Mr. Zulus?
So so um so Katie, I, my thought on that is that uh there could be uh circumstances where this is a controversial, uh and that that it is, uh there is political overtones. And so for that reason, I think it's it's appropriate for the board, if possible, given the timing, to make the judgment. I I I think, you know, we we are the executive authority, and I think if you have uh that kind of decision that may be controversial, I think maybe, uh I think maybe we should, we should continue to do that. That was my thought.
Because wouldn't this policy then apply to even the concerts on the on the green and the gazebo and everything? So maybe there's a way of saying there's something that's routine, whether it's a community concert or a a church wanting to hold a service, maybe that's something we say we're comfortable with the town administrator proving that. If it's something political or First Amendment related or controversial, and I guess it's how do you define that? Then maybe that's within the board's role?
So.
No, go ahead, Mullen.
Well, it, um from what Kevin was saying and and from our recent experience that 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 we had for an a request for an event that actually didn't take place because it was the day before, and it was a political event. It seems that Kevin was indicating that that three business day period before proposed use would likely be used for such occasions because they come up quickly. And I may have misunderstood um what what uh Mr. Freitag was saying. So so I I do favor the approach of sort of defining some routine things. But if 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 free speech events uh often come up quickly, I I I guess I'm not sure what we could do about that because we wouldn't, um it's unlikely that we would be meeting. And I have another question about uh, is there a way for us to waive that if if we really feel that there are extenuating circumstances? Mr. Zulus?
So so one way that we might do it is to delegate the authority to the town administrator and then give the the town administrator the the discretion to raise it with the board. Uh, you know, we'd have to change the, some of the language. But in other words, we we could delegate it to the town administrator, and then the town administrator would have the discretion to decide what is controversial, what should be uh, what should be raised with the board. You know, town town administrator, because that's difficult to define, uh you know, the town administrator would kind of define that on a case-by-case base basis if he or she uh felt it important to raise it with the board. That's one way we could do that. Subject obviously to Kevin saying it's okay.
Right. I I was just looking, uh, Mr. Doyle, who, did you want to uh weigh in on that or?
I would um just say that upon my first reading, I came down where Katie with, on what Katie stated a moment ago, and then upon reflection and re-review, thought that it was probably better to have it as stated here. There are so many things that could be subjective and a number of Pandora's boxes that could be open based upon what claims could be submitted for definitions of that which is political or something else, that the more objective that we leave the protocol, um probably the better. Again, under ordinary circumstances, um a policy adoption by the board is a policy implementation by the town administrator would be fine. On the one hand, on the other hand, do we want to avoid the possibility of contentious situations prior to an application coming to the um the board of select, the select board? Not that it couldn't be contentious before us, but you then have only one party that's adjudicating. Whereas in the other circumstance, you have two parties adjudicating, one may making a decision to refer it to the select board, as might be seen by some as subjective, whereas this allows it to be an objective referral.
Kevin? As as written, I agree. It's a, it's a a wonderful job and 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 very clear, and I I really appreciate that, especially because there are a variety of people using this, some who are lawyers and some who are not, and um I I just, I I appreciate the clarity and um the simplicity yet thoroughness. So written as it is, there's, i- if we, if we did change it to the town administrator having the uh authority, that does not preclude the town administrator from saying to the board, I feel the need for a review on this. Is that, is that the case or?
I I think that that's right. I think that the town administrator could always come back to the board. My only concern there might be the the timing issue. So if something, you know, if something did come up on a Thursday and, you know, people were looking to have an event there on a, on a Saturday or Sunday uh or the following Monday, it might be difficult for the town administrator to get back, to get to the select word in a meeting where the select board could then weigh in in order to provide him with some help or some guidance. That's my concern, but I I certainly appreciate the idea of it, of the the town administrator having input from the select board on, you know, if the select, if the town administrator feels that's necessary.
Right. Well, it it, but uh number four says that unless the timing of the application does not permit a meeting of the select board prior to that, if we use Mike's language, uh so that, that's exactly what's happening. The the town administrator can, has purview over it, those um requests that are within three business days, but 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 uh but outside that two weeks. So I I I also wonder about the um the room for kind of abuse there, uh if you will. So, yes, Mr. Zulus?
I I would just add one thing, if we, if we did delegate it to the town administrator and we, and 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 we wanted to, in, I I think we do need to put language in there about his perhaps, his raising it with the select board in, or his or her raising it with the select board in her discretion. Because if I were aggrieved uh by a decision and the the town administrator um took the decision to the select board and there was nothing in the policy for the select, for the town administrator to do that, I would say, wait a minute, why are you bringing it to the select board? You have to make the decision. So I so I, i- if we were to go that route, I would just want to make sure we would have that language in there saying that, you know, in certain circumstances or in her discretion, the town administrator could raise it with the select board.
Mr. Dennehy, do you have anything that you would like to say about it?
No, no, I appreciate all the work that Kevin's done on this. Obviously, it was brought to everyone's attention because there were a couple of religious events, um and I want to thank both uh Rabbi Benjamin and and Reverend Allen for their patience with this, as Kevin put together a very thorough document. I appreciate all the comments that are made, and and if if there is uh something that, you know, catches my eye, uh nine, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's someone uh hosting a birthday party or uh a wedding on this site, and I think it's pretty cut and dry. Obviously, with COVID, we want to make sure that we're following uh state, state guidelines. We've gotten social distancing and and crowd gathering. Um but no, I appreciate all the comments that are here, and I I think it's, I think it's very well done. And and I think uh both of, both of the requests uh that that brought this uh to this board's attention for for a bit of a policy update, a thorough update, um uh, you know, would would meet the grounds for this and 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 should, should be granted. You know, through this process. We want to try to keep it as simple as possible, but Kevin has certainly updated the form um from from what it, what what existed before. There there is some annual, I'll call them mundane events that that Vice Chair Conlon had talked about with we work with Bonnie DeVore and the Park Commissioners uh regarding those, you know, ten Wednesdays uh during the spring and summer months where the concerts take place. So it it's pretty much cut and dry, but I think this form allows this board to take a look at some other gray issues, if you will, or requests to use the town green. Um and I appreciate the fact that uh the subject matter experts, uh Chief of Police, DPW Director, and Fire Chief Madden also get to weigh in on it and and give their two cents on on each of these applications as that it's not a cookie cutter. Uh that other one or ten percent is something different than than what we normally see on the green.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, um in my senses, it's really, what's really going to be controversial is if it's a political event or a a free speech event, somebody wants to, or a group or an individual who want to make a particular point. So anything else, whether it's weddings or whether it's the concerts or even a regular religious service, I I'm really comfortable letting the town administrator handle those. I think the ones that anything that's really likely to come to the board is something that I think might be, you know, a political candidate or or an issue proponent or opponent wanting to have a rally at the town green and the gazebo. I think that's probably where the where the board, it makes more sense for the board to weigh in. I mean, I think it's consistent with the town administrator legislation that we passed a few years ago to to put the everyday, day-to-day operations in use of the gazebo with the town administrator. Let me raise two other points on this. In number seven, this says that the fee is fifty dollars. It was determined by the board in nineteen ninety-six, and it's charged to non-resident applicants for the gazebo. Now, I know from time to time we look at fees, if it's been since nineteen ninety-six, I'm thinking we should at least consider whether that fee is too low and whether it really should be limited to non-residents, or whether there's a reason for it to be charged to residents also. Um, obviously, it, the funds would go to the maintenance of the gazebo, and the gazebo does, there is a fund to maintain it, but the gazebo needs work from time to time. And um I I think probably does need some work now. And number fifteen, we say use of the town green or the gazebo is not permitted before nine AM or after dusk. We should just keep in mind, in December, the Rotary Club has the annual tree lighting on the, at the gazebo and on the green. So dusk, I think probably works most of the year, but there may be some winter events like that, the Rotary event, for the tree lighting where there will be an application to use the the green and the gazebo after dusk. So maybe we say with limited exception in the winter or or subject to the town administrator's approval or discretion, is some language like that.
Mr. Freitag?
Yes, Madam Chair. I I think that those are all uh very good suggestions, and I I'm thinking that maybe in in the interest of time and given that you've uh scheduled a meeting for next week, um I'm I'm sort of in the weeds on this, and I I've looked through all the policies that I can find, and I'm happy to kind of stick with it here and grind it out and get you a policy that you're very comfortable with, that you could vote at the next meeting, uh rather than rather than try to amend this um during the meeting, because that's tough. Th- this language is is um you know, is is, uh, it needs to be very, obviously, it needs to be very clear. We, I don't, I think we all want to make sure that, you know, we take the, give it the time it deserves. I don't. I think we all want to make sure that, you know, we take the give it the time it deserves. So I'm happy to stick with it and and maybe even if the board wants to. You know, ask one of its members to work with me over the next week and Mike Dennehy just to tighten this up to make sure that it, you know. It sort of covers all the bases. Happy to do that, and I don't think we'd have any problem getting that done by the the meeting next week. And that would also still allow the board to accommodate the requests of the the two churches that have asked for use of the town green as well. That would delay their their consideration.
Okay, that's my main concern.
Well, on that point, since we've already delegated it to the town administrator until a policy is in place, how can that be acted on by Mike Dennehy at this point?
Think so.
I think so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to deliver that news to both Reverend Allen and Rabbi Benjamin. I know I know that. This board and Kevin have been working diligently on this, but to wait another week would. Strike some concern into them because they they need a place, especially Rabbi Benjamin. And the temple need a place to go and they'd have to make alternative plans. I'd love to be able to reach out to each of them tomorrow and. And grant them permission for September 13th and September 20th accordingly.
Please. Because they have planning to do.
Yeah, I think under the prior vote, that's possible.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Freitag. Mr. Zulus.
Just one further thing, and I think Kevin's right, better to do this, do the drafting. However, at the I was gonna say at the risk of spitballing, let me spitball just one more time and to suggest. You know, if we want to get to an objective standard. Rather than political use, perhaps, and this may or may not help, but perhaps we could say, well, if it's if the estimated number of attendees is more than a certain number. You know, that might capture the birthday parties and, you know, if it's more than 50. Right? Maybe maybe then it rises to this board. Maybe that's the objective standard. Maybe that helps. You know, get the objectively get certain. Or most of the events in the hands of the town administrator. But if there are bigger events and that would likely include a political event. Then it would then it would come to us. Just again, just spitball.
Like, I think you'd have to be a higher number than that because 50 is going to pick up all the summer concerts and even the Rotary Club in December.
Yeah, no, I but although I think those events. You know, I think those events are probably easily planned for and we can, you know, on an annual basis, just approve them. Right? But but you're right. I mean, I was just trying to search for some kind of objective standard. Beyond political use, so it may not work.
Well, I I think I'd like to take Kevin's suggestion that that one of the members work. With him and and Mr. Dennehy. And do I have a volunteer or would you like me to do that?
I'm happy to volunteer unless someone else really would like to do it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just add that. With respect to Katie's notion about the fee of $50, just doing a simple calculation on an inflation basis. I think that should be at least $100.
Okay, I.
Not that it couldn't be higher.
Right. I I I think I think back to. The. Climate. March that started at the high school with the club. And so I wonder about events like that that. That end up using the gazebo. And so I I I'm not sure what the right numbers are or whether. If if we're charging residents the same amount that we would charge non residents. I I'm interested in in people's thoughts about that. I don't know that we. Want to think about that at the moment, but.
I'll just weigh in on that and say that I I think there's a good argument. I think I'm. Tend towards the idea that residents. Pay for town government and they pay, they may not pay for specifically for the upkeep, but. But they they do pay and maybe that's the distinction here that residents pay in their taxes and. And if we can, if this can be something that's available to them as part of their. Residency here and the payment of property taxes, then we should do that whereas non residents, you know, don't don't pay. Part of the property taxes.
Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would stay with the stated. Limitation to only non residents and just add to Mike's comment that should we have the good fortune to have. A yes vote on the proposed CPA, then. Funds from. That could be used for the updating of. Community properties like the gazebo.
Mr. Freitag.
I was just gonna ask a question which I can start out with Mike, but there. It's probably worth asking whether or not any federal funds or grants have ever been used to either maintain or. Or in any way sort of. Preserve any parts of the town green or the gazebo because that has some certain implications, I would think, in terms of use and perhaps the fee. But that's something that I can discuss offline with with Mike Dennehy.
Okay.
We do have a fund for the gazebo that I think was donated by Aaron Hugo's family. But in any event, we should look into that question, but there is a dedicated fund for it.
Right. Which I'm sure residents could donate to.
And maybe we could also just look at what some of the communities that Kevin looked at for his research. What are the fees that they're charging? Obviously, the fee has to be tied to the. The cost to the town, so it may be different, but. It would be helpful to know what some other communities are charging for this sort of thing.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This board is not going to be surprised that Jennifer McCullough has been researching that and I'll have her compile a list for us.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. No. We're not surprised. Thank you. Onto Ulan Rink, the one year permit and. Mr. Dennehy has been working hard with this group. And would like to report on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Zulus, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if I know Mr. Wells is on the. Ulan Rink Committee. Did he? Did he want us to? Did he want? Does he need to weigh in? Want to weigh in on this as well or?
I don't believe so. We had a quorum at this morning's meeting.
Okay.
The Ulan Ulan Rink Committee met this morning. With the help of Town Council Peter McNulty and Kevin Freitag. Discussions have been ongoing for the last month. With DCR. Their Labor Council and Murphy Hesse Tumi LaHain. Additionally, there's been a draft, which was approved today. A contract for the management and operation of the rink. If you recall. DCR is under a new administration this year. They're doing things a little bit differently with COVID still. Pressing in our community and through the state of Massachusetts. They wanted to offer a one year permit this year. Under Town Council's advisement, we entered into a sidebar agreement with the co-permitee. Kevin Burchill, who's who previously maintained the rink as an employee of Curry College for approximately the last 10 years. His corporation, 176 Kane Avenue. Is going to be the co-permitee on this. Kevin, do you want to add add some more shed some more light on this before I get into what we discussed this morning with with the Ulan Rink Committee?
Yes, thanks, Mike. The thing I would just point out is that the dynamic here has changed slightly from the past. In in past years, you had DCR. Gave a permit to Milton and then Milton entered into a management agreement with Curry. DCR has now decided that rather than have that structure where it's DCR municipality and then municipality can engage its own. Management services, they've DCR now has decided to draft these permits. As going to multiple permit holders. So now the management company and the town of Milton have. Direct agreement, the permit with DCR. So what we ended up doing essentially was taking. DCR's permit. There were some revisions that that we suggested, including things like. The fee that would be charged to the co-permitees for use of the rink. That was negotiated down considerably. In Milton's favor and also some other provisions that DCR had asked that. We removed because they were just sort of out of date. So after that was done, we then went to Kevin Burchill. Who had been managing the rink for Curry, but now has his own his own corporate entity. And came up with an agreement which. By and large, tracks the agreement that existed in previous years between Milton and Curry College. Which, not coincidentally, was essentially an agreement in effect between Milton and Kevin Burchill because he was the one that was managing the rink. And so instead of there now being this agreement between the town of Milton and Curry College, there is an agreement between the town of Milton and Kevin Burchill's entity. That tracks those former agreements, but just provides sort of the. The division of obligations, if you will, under the permit between the the co-permit holders. So just it very clearly describes who's going to be running the rink, who's responsible for repairs. And all those aspects that Kevin Burchill's company is going to take care of. In basically the same way that things operated previously. So although the structure of. This this agreement has changed, the the reality of it, the effect has not, which is that Milton still. Will exist as a permit holder and we're still looking to another group, in this case, Kevin Burchill's entity, to manage the rink for Milton.
Very good, Kevin. Yeah. And and on the heels of of all of this and COVID lurking in our community again. Ice rinks are opening. This this rink would like to open next week, which means ice needs to be made over the weekend. There have been funds secured by our state legislation team, especially Senator Timmeltie, who's been stalwart on this. A huge advocate for the town maintaining its name on the permit. Secured $500,000 worth of funding. There'll be a site walk tomorrow with members of the Ulan Rink Committee who can be there to take a look at some of those. And then at a later date, a more formal walkthrough. If you remember last year, a huge investment was made to the boards and glasses. Boards and glass down at the rink. This year, there's some locker rooms being installed. There's a new Zamboni on its way, so. Very, 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 very thankful for the DCR administration and Town Council for working through this. Again, there there is no out of pocket to the town at all. The town would love to manage the rink if we could. There are communities, surrounding communities like Waymouth who do it. We just don't have the bandwidth to that to do that, but. Mr. Burchill has run the rink, albeit through Curry College for the last decade. All all parties down there have been asked for recommendations or suggestions. He's been willing and able. I think he'll continue that partnership. We are looking for a longer term deal and that's something we'll we'll probably take a look at. As December heads to January, hopefully, the rink doesn't see any closure or any type of slowdown due to the virus. But the Ulan Committee Rink Committee this morning talked about having quarterly reports with Mr. Burchill to make sure that. Everything is is working accordingly. So with with your permission tonight. I ask two things that that we. Acknowledge this agreement with Mr. Burchill and the permit with DCR for one year. So it would run. From tonight through August 31st of 2021. And that. If you want to make me the signatory, that's fine. I can sign these documents and get them off to DCR tomorrow. And with that, I'll take any questions that that you may have.
Mr. Zulus.
I have three questions and I don't want to delay this. I just have three questions. One. Under section four, the payment, it references the as Exhibit A, the the Massachusetts regulation for the the rates. Time, and I didn't see that attached. To the contract. So I think I just want to make sure that the Exhibit A is attached. This is the management agreement. With 176 or Kane 176. We'll make sure we get that rate sheet attached. I think I didn't see it on mine. Maybe it's there. I just didn't see it. Two, who decides ice time? Is it is it Mr. Mr. Burchill be deciding who gets the ice time and when?
So so there is a list. I'm not sure what section it is in in the document that. Basically allows for the priority or the batting order, if you will. The Senator was a staunch advocate for making sure that nonprofit youth organizations are at the top of that list. In essence, when that commitment by a nonprofit youth organization or say the Boys and Girls High School Team. They get first dibs and then it would go to a private for profit entity.
I get that's in the that's in the permit.
Yes.
Twenty four. So it says the groups, the priorities, number one, general public skating, two nonprofit youths, three high school. Four youth groups, groups, and then five adult organizations.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So the four profits would be last. And to your first question, Member Zulus, those rates are set by the state. And those rates have been in effect for the last seven years. They have not changed. So. Some of the local youth hockey programs have voiced concern. There will be extra hours this year. If you remember, Curry College thankfully honored their commitment to manage the rink last year. They did take their men's program elsewhere, but their women's program did eat up a chunk of ice time at the rink last year. Those hours will be made available. And it's Mr. Burchill's contention that those also go to. Youth programs in the community. Just for clarification, it's not just Milton Youth Hockey that uses that Bay State Figure Skating, Score Boston. Ranger Youth Hockey, Westwood Youth Hockey, Norwood Youth Hockey. So there's a there's an abundance of youth hockey programs. In search of ice time. I will say that the Pocapog Rink on Turnpike Street, which succumbed to the winter of 2015. Has been restored, so it should see possibly additional hours of, you know, and Westwood. Folks that may find that commute a little easier. So there should be plenty of ice time to go around.
And I and I I would note under section 25 of the permit. It says ice time may be allocated at the discretion of the at the discretion of the permitee with the following restrictions, and it talks about general public skating, but the permitee. Is is defined as the town and 176 Kane. So arguably. Mike, we you could you could talk to Kevin and have some input into the allocation of ice time.
Correct. Yeah. And I will say that the just just on another note of the investment that's been made in the rink. Progress is being made. For those that are familiar with the rink, if you go to the the west end of the building, that was basically Curry's territory. There were locker rooms down there that were. Exclusively for Curry's use. Those that's one of the main investments that the Senate is secured funding for. And specifically for women's locker rooms. So there will be dedicated women's locker rooms down there and those two locker rooms will be assumed by. Both Milton Youth Hockey Teams, varsity teams. Come November, should the MIAA grant winter sports permission to play.
Final question, and this is more legal, I think, although arguably, maybe it's not, maybe it's it's business illegal, but. Section 18, 18C of the contract. Gives both parties a 30 day termination for convenience. That may be a little bit nervous, which means that, you know, arguably. 176 Kane could terminate with 30 days' notice just for convenience for no reason. Maybe a little bit concerned that, you know, sometimes you want to. Extend that out a little bit so that people can't just drop and run. But again, we don't want to hold this up. But that's that's that was the third thing that jumped out to me. Next time I would I would or maybe maybe you can get him to to agree, Mike, you know, at least we get, you know, three months or six months notice. For termination. It's probably a small point. It's only a year deal. He's probably not going to. Probably no issue there, but just something we want to be aware of because we just want. Want some stability and predictability there.
Sure.
Are there other questions? Mike, I I was just wondering. In this time of COVID. Will the the health department be available to consult? With.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So Mass Hockey, which is the governing body over youth hockey in the state of Massachusetts. And and I will say, and I don't want to drag this on, Milton Youth Hockey is the largest youth hockey program in the state with the largest girls program in the state. So many people are anxiously waiting for Mr. Burchill to turn the compressors on on Friday. But yeah, they're the governing body. They're sending out guidance daily. There was an update yesterday. It's probably 20 pages. And they do talk about the local health agency inspecting and following through on that. So that there's it's a very strict guideline this year. I think Mass Hockey is is fortunate to be opening on time. And I'm sure there's going to be strict measures in place. I looked through it briefly. I think only one parent is allowed in the rink for each child, stuff like that. So they're trying to minimalize the the amount of people in the building and and stress stress the the skaters have their time on the ice, and there's some restrictions in place. But the Board of Health will take a look at it as well.
Oh, great. Anything we can do to ensure people's health and and a successful season? Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair. I'll move that we approve the contract for management of operation of the Max Ullin Memorial Rink between the town and Kane 176 Corporation and the permit agreement among the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, the town of Milton and Kane 176 Corporation for the operation, management, and maintenance of the Max Ullin Memorial Rink, and that we authorize the town administrator to sign both the management agreement and the permit agreement on the town's behalf.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins? Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome, and thank you. But we have a second motion to make. Actually, I'll just move this up. I I move to authorize the town administrator to sign management agreement and permit agreement on the town's behalf.
I already I included that in my motion. It's really one motion.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought we had to make it separately. It was written separately, so I thought we had to do it again separately. Thank you. Okay. Item. Let's move on to item 10.
If I may, folks, I don't think you need me for anything else tonight, unless you do, and then I'm happy to stick around. But if you don't know, I'll say good night.
Good night, Kevin.
Good night, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now we're moving on to appointments and reappointments. We have an appointment for our Assistant Planning Director, Allison Quinn, to the Select Board Milton Landing Committee.
Madam Chair, I'll move to appoint Allison Quinn to the Select Board Milton Landing Committee.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Yes. Reappointment of Tom Callahan to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Madam Chair, I will move to reappoint Tom Callahan to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins? Yes. Number 12.
Madam Chair, I will move to reappoint Joseph Reed as Norfolk County Advisory Board Representative.
Oh, sorry. I thought you said second. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins? Yes. 13, approval Parkway Cab Taxi License. In reading the the material, it seems that there's one cab company remaining that serves as Milton residents. And I'm very thankful to Parkway Cab because I'm sure there are some residents who don't use ride share. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Dennehy, would you like to say anything about this before we vote?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Go ahead, Katie.
I thought Mike was the one who said that.
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll move. I'll move to approve the taxi license for Parkway Cab of 66 Alfius Road, Roselandale, with the term expiring May 31st, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Item 14. We would like to thank the First Congregational Church for a $1,000 donation to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And I will entertain a motion to accept the donation.
I'll move to accept a donation of $1,000 from the First Congregational Church, the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins? Yes. And I have to say thank you again. Great, great partners and neighbors at First Congregational Church. Approval of meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve minutes from May 6th, May 20th, June 3rd, June 10th, June 24th, June 1st, July 22nd, July 28th, August 5th, and August 12th.
I haven't had a chance to read the last three, even though Hillary was good enough to print them off for me yesterday.
Okay.
I I already looked at the prior ones, but the and I think the changes were okay. But those, but I'll, you know, if others have read them, I'm sure they're fine. So.
I don't mind. I mean, does anyone have an objection to deferring them? So Katie can read through them. I mean.
I'd prefer it. I'd like to take another look through as well. I was kind of fast on the last couple.
So Madam Chair, I'll move acceptance of the minutes of May 6th, May 20th, June 3, June 10, June 24, July 1, and July 22.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Yes. Okay, thank you. And we'll defer July 28th, August 5th, and August 12. Confirm future meeting dates. So we have a sidewalk that we need to plan for the town-owned parcel abutting 145 and 167 Lyman Street. And Hillary, wait, was kind enough to be in contact with Dr. Vias. And any Saturday, if we wish to do it on a weekend, except the 5th of September would would work. So do members have a preferred date? And my assumption is that we would do it on a Saturday, but that may not be the case. But that would allow neighbors to participate.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Are we going to have Dr. Vias in to explain what his interest is and what his plans would be if he were to be able to buy the property? Should that precede the sidewalk? Or or does that matter whether it's afterwards that we we have a discussion about the plans?
Well, at our last meeting, I believe we said our preference was for him to attend a meeting and explain it. And and then we would and then we would have the the sidewalk. So if you'd rather invite him in for the 9th and then schedule the sidewalk, that's fine.
Well, I guess my only question is if we want to get to make sure that any representative of the neighborhood who wants to attend, we did have a discussion at our last meeting, so there is at least some public knowledge about it. But if we just schedule a sidewalk, would we be notifying the neighborhood about that? Better to have a discussion with Dr. Vias and then schedule it. I'm just not sure what the, you know, maybe I think it tells from the Concom or some other what the best way to proceed there is so that there's enough public interest and notice about the situation.
Mr. Doyle?
I was just going to suggest what Katie mentioned in reference to the Conservation Commission. Those are public meetings. Neighbors are welcome to attend once the meeting is posted. Want to make sure that all the abutters are informed. That could probably be done. We could check Kevin on the way to do that. And and the opponent could appear at that meeting and make the case there.
You're saying at the sidewalk?
Absolutely.
Okay. So would.
I I think I'd still like to have the Dr. Vias come into one of our televised meetings. He could be at the sidewalk also. But I think it would be good to have a discussion at a televised meeting as to what the plans are so that we can make a decision on whether there's any interest in moving forward. But that could follow the sidewalk, I guess.
Okay, so I I heard two different things. I heard have have him come into a televised meeting and then schedule the sidewalk. But then now now I think I heard the reverse, that he could come in after.
I'm it doesn't matter to me what the order is. I don't know if anyone else has a preference on the order, but I would like him to come into a televised meeting in addition to or at least he can be at the sidewalk too. But I'd like him to be at a televised meeting to explain what the plans are so that people can, who may not be able to be at a sidewalk or the broader community might be able to weigh in on this issue.
Mr. Doyle?
That's fine, Katie. I would just suggest that the order be the review first, followed by the sidewalk.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, I I agree because you'll have a lot of questions come up at the sidewalk. And I just, I think that broader notification in a meeting would would work better. And originally, I thought we might want to try to schedule it to make sure that we we have that date. However, we're not pressed for time at at the moment, I suppose, because we do have due diligence to do. I was just. So that's probably and the 19th is Rosh Hashanah. So, you know, that's, I think, off that we wouldn't want to go there. So perhaps we could, yes, Mr. Dennehy?
Doesn't doesn't this require a town meeting article?
It does. And that's why I, knowing that we 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 may want to put it on for the special town meeting in December. I didn't know if we were trying to get this done early, but there's I think there's just too much due diligence as we talked about at the last meeting. So this wouldn't this wouldn't be till the the annual town meeting anyway. So so we we don't, there's not a hurry to do the sidewalk. So we just need to invite Dr. Vias in for the next regular meeting on September 9th, if he's able to make it. So, thank you. Okay. And now on to the town administrator's report.
I'm unmute myself. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to give a brief update on the work that's going on in East Milton Square. A huge inconvenience for many. But I think those that have have been watching down there will agree that the work that the McKay Company is doing is second to none. The sidewalks that have have been replaced on a portion of Adams Street from Adams Court back down towards Franklin Street are impeccable. They're working their way around the corner. They are tying up some parking spots and and utilizing a multitude of police details. But unfortunately, it's it's one of the busiest intersections in town, if not the busy busiest intersection in town. We did receive some complaints about some rodent issues and some dusting issues. McKay has been very responsive in their work. They immediately started watering down the area a couple of weeks ago. They are working with Mastod. It was not, rodent control was not necessarily an item in their contract with Mastod. But Chase Berkeley spoke with them yesterday, and and they're adhering to that. And they're going to take the necessary steps to to mitigate anything that may be coming from that site. The there's been some requests or some asks about what's going on with the trees down there. They said they saved as many trees as possible. There's a handful of trees down at the Public Works Yard that are going to be replanted at Crane Field. They're just trying to work through the specifics on on where 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 they fit best, what 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 type of tree. But they did try to save as many as they could. And the the net of the project, there will be an abundance more trees on on the deck than were removed. So there we have full confidence that that it'll be a greener footprint than it was prior to the construction or reconstruction. So again, a work in progress. It's it's never easy. School's going to get back in session. I'm not sure if there's going to be school buses floating through there. So traffic will probably pick up a little more. I expect the sidewalk work to be done relatively quickly as a part of the Phase One work on Granite Avenue and Adams Street. And then some of those parking shop spots should be returned back to the businesses. So I want to thank them and all neighbors and anyone that passes through the intersection. But a lot of good work being done by the McKay Group down there. A lot of coordination between our Public Works Department and Mastod, who's the the lead on this project. But again, anybody that has any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to me at Town Hall, 617-898-4845, and we'll address that, any issue you have immediately. Any questions or comments on on the deck or anything that the members may be hearing?
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I'm through there at least once, if not a couple of times a day. And I've been very impressed with the diligence of the contractor and his crews. The way in which they've worked with traffic has been, I think, quite professional. And I also want to add that the Conservation Commission has a virtual tree bank. And Mike might want to consult with Kathy Bowen and see about the availability of resources from that tree bank for the replanting. That has not already been entertained.
I I don't think it has, but I'll make sure that Chase follows up with Kathy. Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Yes, Mr. Zulus?
Mike, you may you may have mentioned this. My sound went out for a minute. Did you address the trees and the replanting and all of that?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, my sound went out for a minute. Okay.
Yeah, there are a couple of people that questioned, you know, you know, we literally, they leveled a couple of trees. It's it's going to be a net positive for our carbon footprint down there with with Chase Berkeley could or the Shade Tree Advisory Committee could weigh in some better trees, some non-invasive and and better trees for for that area. Well, one more thing, if I might add. I just want to thank the Town Clerk's Office. Early voting, although low, low turnout, probably not more than 300 people since they opened the doors Saturday. But early voting continues tomorrow at Town Hall. Anybody that wants to vote in person can come to Town Hall, come to the east entrance, the handicapped accessible entrance from 8:30 to 4:30, and Friday from 8:30 to 1:30. And then the election day itself is is Tuesday, and all polling locations will be open in a socially distancing safe manner. So thank you to the Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. I I wanted to let people know. We were talking about the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition earlier, and they have a gateway film that they're screening, but you can also look at on YouTube, and it's on opioid use. And connected to that, Mike's 5K is scheduled for October 17th. So people can start signing up already. And today is Women's Equality Day to commemorate in 1920, the passing of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution so that women have a vote. And just really, I wanted to to mention those few things. Do any members have reports?
Any, Madam Chair.
Ms. Conlon?
I don't have a report, but I'm sure we all want to acknowledge Mary Gormley of the School Department and thank her for all of her service to the town of Milton and to the Milton Public Schools.
Yes, I.
I don't want to jump ahead of anyone else. You know, I know Mike Zulus has had a longer relationship with Mary as a school committee member than I have. But I I wanted to at least recognize all of her achievements her achievements and all, all that she has contributed to the town and wish her well.
Thank you, Katie. Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, I would say that it was my privilege while I was on the school committee to work with Mary Gormly. She was more dedicated, worked harder, and worked better for each of the four thousand children in the Milton Public Schools than anyone could ever imagine. Her dedication was the highest possible, and as I said, it was my privilege to be able to work with her for a short period of time. And I, I, it's a, it's a, a well-deserved retirement, but, but she surely will be missed. And she, she did indeed, while Superintendent, I can, I can, I can tell you, cared and was concerned about each child in the district, and, and that will be missed.
She leaves very big shoes to fill by her successor, so we're hard-pressed to find. There, there've been a lot of people have done a lot for the schools, but Mary Gormly has certainly given her whole life to the Milton Schools and her entire career with Milton Schools, and we should thank her and wish her well on her retirement. I will miss her.
I have to echo all of those sentiments. Mike, you said to me early on, when I started, no one cares more than Mary about students, and, and that was my, certainly my experience of her. Okay, um, public comment response. Does anyone wish to say anything? Yeah, okay. Future agenda items. Does anyone have an item they'd, they'd like to place on a future agenda that isn't already there? Mr. Zulus?
There was something, I can't remember. I thought, but I must have forwarded it to Mike. Well, whatever it was, I'll, yeah, there was something, and I can't remember what it was now. I think I forwarded it to you and Mike, so you, you got it.
Okay, right. And that's just as a reminder to you, Mr. Doyle, if you have something in between meetings, please always just forward it. Yes.
I was just going to ask, Mike, Madam Chair, whether or not he thought we ought to consider scheduling an update from the Yes for Milton Initiative at some point in time, since it's, uh, put forward by the Select Board?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's separate and apart, or that's really separate and apart from the, from the, anything the Select Board would do. I, I don't, you know, that, that, yeah, I, I, I don't think so. I don't think that's, I could be wrong, but I don't think that's really our role to have one side or the other into us, but.
Right, that, that's, that's, yeah, that, that's my understanding as well.
Fair enough. That's why I asked the question.
Oh, it's, it's always good to ask, so, thank you.
It had been asked of me, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to.
So I move that we adjourn this meeting of the Select Board in order to move into a meeting for the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Fund.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Um, I will call to order the meeting of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Fund at eight thirty-four PM. And this is a discussion of the pest house repairs. Mr. Dennehy?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees of the Governor's Stoughton. So over the weekend, it came to our attention, good news, bad news. If you recall, this board sought funding from the trust to secure the men's arms house prior to the winter. That has held up quite well, to the point where the pest house actually received a bit of vandalism. So the, all the boarding up and, and the securing of the roof with tarts for the men's arms house has led vandals to the pest house, unfortunately. And the front door was kicked in. I believe I sent around some pictures of that Nancy Bressani, our Animal Control Officer, noticed on Monday morning. Building Commissioner Joe Prondak visited the site and decided at that time it, it needed to be secured immediately. He reached out to Consolidated Facilities to see if it was something in, in their bellywig, but in abundance of caution because of the timing and the sensitivity of, of the site, I asked that this get on the trustees' agenda. Thankfully, we do not need any funding. Bob Mayhew and the Consolidated Facilities crew went up there yesterday and fully secured the building. The building is safe. I, you know, it, it, it's not boarded up like the men's arms house of the, of the, the other edifice up there, but the windows are exposed. The front door is the front door, but hopefully this will deter any further vandalism from taking place up there. But, so the work that was done this winter has deterred vandals. Unfortunately, they, they struck the pest house. We don't believe they got into the building. We think that, that, the, the way it was secured from the inside of the building allowed them to, to kick it in, but there's a, a series of, of measures inside the building that prohibited entry to the building. So it's not any concern that anyone is, is staying in the building or, or taking up occupancy. It was just, you know, I think it was a random act of violence, but it, it's been, it's been sorted by our Consolidated Facilities Department. So at this time, I, I, I don't think there's any funding necessary for that, but just an unfortunate incident for the town.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? So at this point, we have minutes for the Governor's Stoughton Trust, and I move that we approve meaning, meeting minutes from May twenty-seventh, June third, June twenty-fourth, July first, and July twenty-second.
Second.
Any discussion about the minutes or concerns because people haven't quite had enough time to look through them all? All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Excellent. I move that we enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, specifically the town farm property, believing that having such discussion in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Fund.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mike Lynch.